Good evening. Pursuant to Section 841411 of the Nebraska statutes, the next regular meeting of the Board of Education of Douglas County School District One and the Board of Educational Service Unit Number Nineteen will be held on Monday, November 3rd, 2025, at 6:00 PM in the Teaching and Learning Center at the Teacher Administrative Center, 3215 Cummings Street. Please visit our website, www OPS.org. The agenda will be kept current and available for public inspection in the office of the Secretary of the Board of Education at the Administrative Building during regular working hours. Pursuant to Section 841412 of the Nebraska statutes, the public is hereby informed that a current copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is posted in the Teaching Learning Center on the North Wall. Please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you very much. Now, Vice President Snipes will lead us in the OPS Vision and Mission Statement.
Okay. The vision: Every student, every day, prepared for success. And the mission: To prepare all students for success in college, career, and life.
Thank you very much. Dr. McFarland, roll call, please.
Almanza.
Present.
Erdenberger.
Present.
Paul. Holman. Krackey.
Here.
Magnusson.
Present.
Smith. Snipes.
Here.
Tealyn.
Here.
Six, present.
Thank you very much. We have a quorum. I did hear from Dr. Holman, Mr. Smith, and Ms. Paul that they would not be available tonight, so I would like to entertain a motion to excuse their absences.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Vice President Snipes, seconded by Board Member Magnusson. Roll call, please.
Snipes.
Aye.
Tealyn.
Aye.
Almanza.
Aye.
Erdenberger.
Aye.
Krackey.
Aye.
Magnusson.
Aye.
Six, aye.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Motion passes. Up next is the school spotlight, and I would like to welcome our JROTC students from Benson, Buena Vista, Burke, Central, and Westview High Schools.
President Erdenberger, Vice President Snipes, members of the board, and Superintendent Ray, we are here today to honor our Legion of Valor awardees. This award has over 4,000 cadets that put in it per year. The cadets must demonstrate exceptional leadership, academic excellence, strong moral character, and significant community and school involvement. And only a select few in the nation are awarded this award. So today, we are here to give special spotlight recognition to Cadet Lieutenant Colonel Sidney Sannovich from Benson, Cadet Lieutenant Colonel Jennifer Lamuse from Buena Vista, Cadet Lieutenant Jenna Crippen, and Cadet Captain Michael Stemhoff from Burke, Cadet Captain Drew Holt from Central, and Cadet Lieutenant Colonel Jamie Jordan from Westview.
Hello, everyone. I'm Cadet Lieutenant Colonel Sidney Sannovich. I'm the Battalion Commander of the Benson Cadet Battalion. I have received a Benson academic letter, and I was the team captain of our academic pool team. I have the privilege to march on our JRTC drill teams. I'm the commander of our varsity color guard, and I had the privilege of competing at National High School Drill Team Championship and Army Nationals. Very blessed to do that. I was the team leader for our domestic violence service learning project. Outside of JRTC, I am involved in Student Ambassadors, National Honor Society, and I'm the principal violist for our Benson High School Orchestra. Right now, I'm applying for the National ROTC Scholarship, and I'm currently planning to enroll in Creighton. My ultimate goal is to attend law school and serve in the Judge Advocate General Corps.
Hello. Good evening, everybody. My name is Lieutenant Colonel Jennifer Lamuse. I am Battalion Commander for Buena Vista. I participate in our Raider Team, Drill Team, J-Lab. Outside of JRTC, I'm also involved in National Honor Society. I'm part of Senior Senate this year, my senior year. And I just try to get myself involved with many stuff at school as I can.
Hello. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Cadet for Lieutenant Crippen. And in JRTC, I have done our Raider and Drill Team, and I am the commander this year for our Drill Team. I'm the XO for Burke. And outside of JRTC, I have done varsity basketball and track for three years. I've been the captain for both for two years now. And outside of high school, I work at the Omaha Henry, Dorrly Zoo, and Aquarium. And then outside of that, for my future career, I have signed a four-year contract to be an Apache mechanic for our Army.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I am Cadet Captain Michael Steinhoff. I'm the Battalion Commander at Burke High School. Activities I've commanded in JRTC are color guard, orienteering, our Raider Team. I've participated in drill. There's marksmanship as well. Outside of JRTC, I work part-time at Walmart as an online order filler. And after high school, I intend on joining an Air Force ROTC program and majoring in aerospace engineering or another aerospace-related field in college. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Cadet Captain Drew Holt. I am in JRTC. I'm the Battalion Operations Officer, also known as the S3. And in JRTC, I'm involved in the varsity color guard and unarmed drill team, and I'm the commander of the armed drill team. Outside of JRTC, I'm in varsity football, so I'm the starting center, and I'm in the marching band as well. And... That's pretty much it for that part. And then, sorry, there's just a lot of faces. And then I plan on going into the reserves, Army Reserves. I just recently got my score to get military police, so I'll continue to pursue on that. So I plan to go to UNL for all four years and do criminal justice and criminology.
Good evening. My name is Jamie Jordan. I'm the Battalion Commander at Westview High School. In JRTC, I'm part of the color guard as well as a member of the drill team. Outside of JRTC, I do a lot of community service. I work at Standing Bear Elementary. After high school, I plan to go to Clarkson College to earn my bachelor's in science nursing and become a trauma nurse.
Thank you very much. And before we have questions, I would like to ask the parents of these wonderful students to stand up because they should be clapped as well. Parents? Thank you very much. This didn't happen in a vacuum. And while we're at it, our principals for Benson, Burke, Buena Vista, and Central, right? Are they all here? Did I get everybody? Thank you. And baby Buena Vista while we're at it over there. I have one question for one of these wonderful people. Does anybody else have a question that they would like to ask?
I know there's a lot of you, but if we could just get each of you to say, or anybody that's interested, just tell us a little bit about why you decided to join ROTC to begin with and what you might tell other students about why they should join.
To be honest, I didn't have any idea what JRTC was when I joined it. I just put it on my schedule because my mom recommended it to me. And so I went in not having a clue what it was about, but then I was introduced to all these different activities and extracurriculars that provided a bunch of leadership opportunities and opportunities to travel to different states. It also opened up opportunities to meet tons of amazing people, and that can help me and others who do JRTC find their path in life. So for like college, there's so many people that I can talk to for like letters of recommendation or advice, and it's a great program overall, and I've really enjoyed it throughout my high school career.
Did anybody else want to share with us why they went into JROTC?
I joined JRTC my freshman year midway, like, first semester, like going into second quarter because I was offered a cookie by my friend because you get a ribbon when you recruit somebody. So she told me that if I joined, she got the ribbon, I would get a cookie. I'm still waiting for my cookie. But along the way, I was very unsure when I first went to JRTC because I didn't really know much, so I was kind of scared, not gonna lie. But now that I'm here and I've seen all the things I've accomplished, I'm so grateful that I continue with the program through all four years of my high school. I've gotten so many opportunities to do so many things, and just to push myself to the limits that not even I knew that I could. I really love all the activities that JRTC offers, and not just those, but also for my instructors because they push me further to do better outside of just JRTC and school in general. So I would say that it's one of the best programs I've ever had.
It's fantastic. Thank you. Mrs. Krackey, did you have a question?
I was just gonna ask about aviation, and are you in that program? So you're going to be going forward with that?
Yeah. Burke has an aerospace program. Currently, I'm taking classes for aerospace engineering. It's really great. I've had a few field trips to hangars, and I get to meet a lot of people who have a lot of knowledge in that field, so I'm planning on...
In the past, I think some of the graduates from Burke went right into training school or something in aviation right out of high school. Is that right? Right? Mr. Bassington? Yeah. They're a step ahead, so they've already completed some of the things. Can you tell us what you have already completed that others have not that are going into that?
Can you repeat that? Sorry.
What classes do you think you have taken and are moving forward in that other students just from any school are agreeing to go into that? What have you done that they haven't done?
I'm unsure about the other schools, how much they have in aerospace, but Burke, one of the main things, one of the reasons why I went there was because the air and space was such a big part of it. So I've learned a lot of using CAD software, so like designing, using a computer, designing different aircraft parts, the process that goes into that and how that's applied in real-life fields. I've had, we've done a few projects which are really intuitive. It helps me learn a lot, and they're also really fun. Again, I'm not sure what other schools have, but I think Burke has a step up in that department with aerospace.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Magnusson, do you have any question?
Yes. Congratulations to all of you. I was a JROTC student for all four years of high school, which we just called ROTC back in the day. Don't know if you do that. But I joined because for freshman and sophomore year, you could be exempt from PE. And it turned out that I deeply loved the program, and there are things that I have still taken away from it and still think back to. And so my question for maybe a couple of you is, can you talk a little bit about what you have, what you will take from JROTC with you for the rest of your life? Experiences, realizations, lessons? I'd like to know what is meaningful for you.
So back in, I believe, sophomore and junior year, we went over CPR, and I, at the time, I was thinking I want to become like an air medic in the Army and ended up not going that way. But it's still a good thing that I know how to do CPR, and I do want to go somewhere with this. I am in a health pathway, so it does help me if I do want to go and become like a nurse or something. It does give me a leg up, and I'll take away like a big leadership role as the armed team commander, and it helps me in football as well. So as the varsity center, I have to take action, how to help out my teammates, say what's right and wrong. And for Central Football Team, it's very important. Kind of Central is just known for not following the rules, and I kind of help put that in check for them.
Thank you.
With the career path that I chose, trauma nursing, JRTC has not only taught me communication that'll take far beyond my career, but teamwork, leadership, how to stand out to make sure people see you, and so you can get the best advice that you possibly can, especially in nursing school. You want to stand out. You want to be out there, and I think JRTC has impacted me a lot to become a nurse, and that's why I'm becoming a nurse.
Vice President Snipes.
Like my colleague, I also spent all four years of high school in JROTC, and it was also for the same reason. I wanted to avoid gym at first. No, seriously, though, what I did leave with was just so much just leadership and character development. That's what really stands out to me. My little brother was as well. He was also a battalion commander. What I'd like to hear from you is, I know that when people think about ROTC, we strictly think about discipline and uniforms and things like that. I'd just like to hear maybe how your school community, whether it's your parents, your friends, your teachers, how have they been supportive of you throughout?
I would say that in my school, JRTC is very well-known, and our principal, Dr. Carr, she is also very well-involved with us. She's like up to date with everything we do. She's at our competitions and everything. For uniform, I would say is the best part, especially with the jackets and the ribbons you have on. It's just like 10 times cooler. There are some people, sometimes they will like make fun of it or just like make little jokes on it, but honestly, like your friends are there, they don't really point it out much. And my mom has been really supportive for me, and she's the one that keeps me on track with my stuff, and she's always like, you have to know when you have stuff planned, when they're planned, and what time you have to be there. So she helps me a lot with everything. So at Benson especially, Ms. Bailey is the biggest advocate for everything in JRTC. She always shouts us out on the announcements when we go and speak at competition, and she put my face all over the Benson newsletter, all over the announcements, so I'm everywhere. The staff in general at Benson are very supportive. I've had a lot of them write me recommendations, especially for Legion of Valor, and they were all so supportive of me, even when sometimes I didn't really believe in myself. They hyped me up and they kept me going, so it's good to have that support. And my mom was in JRTC back in 2000, and my big sister was, and she graduated in 2016, so they're always so supportive of me and all that I do, and I could not be here without the staff, Colonel, my family, and everybody that supported me along the way.
Thank you, everybody. You're fantastic. I'm sorry I'm gonna go off JROTC question. I have a question for our center and the football team. Did you say you are playing the center on varsity football and the marching band?
Yes, ma'am.
So that means when during halftime, you're not back recovering, you're marching?
I actually did that my freshman year, and I decided how if I was to just skip the halftime and what football's talking about, because it's like we could be downed by something, and you know, coach is making a new lineup for the line, and unfortunately would not get playing time if I did that, and I had to prioritize football. But if I could do both again, I would, but freshman year was definitely a blast, and a lot of people knew, like, that kid, I remember you from somewhere. And it's like, on the football field, it's like, yeah.
I think that's a Jason Kelsey thing, isn't it? Wasn't he playing football and playing the saxophone in the marching band? I'm sorry. Sorry, going down a path. And it's beside the point because you guys are fantastic, and people that have been around for as long as I can breathe a sigh of relief that you guys are coming up and gonna be leading the country as we go forward. So thank you very, very much, and congratulations. Thank you again to everybody that took the time to join us tonight. That was truly refreshing and wonderful. Next up is Board and Superintendent Communications, starting with Superintendent Ray.
Good evening, President Erdenberger, Vice President Snipes, members of the board, and the community at large. I'll start with a reminder for our community. We have a late start improvement day next Tuesday, October 28th. On late start days, students begin school two hours after the normal bell. Staff use the morning to study data, review student work, and plan as a team to improve teaching through our classrooms. Information has been posted on our website and shared in district newsletters. Family will get an email and a reminder text about the schedule change. On the agenda today, on tonight, there's another student-built house underway with support from the Omaha Public Schools Foundation and industry partners. Young people get an incredible hands-on experience in many different professional roles. You may remember last year's student-built house and also an opportunity to view that house. We're happy to share that that house has been sold. Again, a special thanks to Omaha Public Schools Foundation for their constant support in that effort. This weekend, there was the Omaha Marching Invitational. Congratulations to all the musicians who took the field this weekend. I had the fortune to see several groups perform, I want a special shout-out to Benson High School as they performed "The Pirates of the Caribbean." It was quite a show. You can see the growth in their performance, it's proof that students' commitment and student leadership and staff dedication. Excellent work for all, I also want to thank Sarah Stratman-Bab and the team that puts on both the marching exhibition and invitational every year. Also, a copy of tonight's congratulations report will be on the school staff and district's homepage tomorrow, celebrating student and staff achievements. So I have a book to share, so bring your students into the board meeting or into your house for another great book, and I was given it today, and it was inscribed by the author, and it says, "To Mr. Ray, Shoot for the Moon," and it's from Charles R. Smith, written by Charles R. Smith, and illustrated by Evening Montiero, and it's called "Through the Telescope, May Jemison Dreams of Space." And Mrs. Crackey, I'll share some pictures, but the pictures in this book are amazing, but it's about the Omaha Public Schools, it's about what we're reaching for each day, and timing is perfect because of the students that we started off our meeting with. You can't just, I think we're all so proud in the kids that we serve, sometimes it gets lost in the noise, but it shows just amazing kids we serve. So it's called "Through the Telescope, May Jemison Dreams of Space." Planet Earth, Chicago, USA, through a telescope shared a little girl named May. Past passenger planes and supersonic jets streaking through the stratosphere, just past the exosphere to the darkness of space, May stared at the stars and a smile filled her A smile from watching the sky shimmer before her eyes, and May was mesmerized by its enormous size. There is Mercury, Venus, Jupiter, Mars, all in the Milky Way are galaxy of stars. Over 1 billion stars make up a galaxy, and there are hundreds of billions of galaxies. Cabrera, whirlpool, and pinwheel, fireworks, sunflower, needle, and cartwheel. Billions of galaxies filled with billions of stars, and May realized, space went so far, so far. This is a great picture where she's riding the star. So far. How far, how far to the stars, how do you measure a distance that far? Light years measure how far to the stars. A light year is about 6 trillion miles away, that's a six with 12 zeros, calculated, May. May wondered, may question, may dreamed, may learned, through the telescope as the sky turned. Past the sun of our solar system, the nearest star is Proxima Centauri, still four light The moon is closer, that's why it's so bright and large in our sky, lighting up the night. Clusters of stars called constellations captured May's curiosity and imagination. The Big Dipper, Little Dipper, Orion, and Pegasus, Leo, the Lion, and the Hero, Perseus, glittered glow and lit up May's face, their stories as stars sketched out in space. May dreamed of floating so far, far away, so small, just floating through space someday. Someday, someday, someday dreamed May, through a telescope on Earth, Chicago, USA. So this is a true story of May Jemison, she was, she was the first black male, female astronaut to travel into space on September 12th, 1992, orbiting Earth 127 times in eight days. So it shows what's possible, as we enter the first really year of the moonshot and reaching towards all student reading on grade level, it shows that our dreams can come true, and it shows, it's a good example of someone who had a dream and got there, as we continue to work on all students reading on grade level by 2030. So thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Ray. Hard act to follow, but let's see if any board members have some comments. Ms. Almanza.
I love the book. Thank you for reading that. Matt. Superintendent, thank you. Now, I was so into the book that now, President Erdenberger, colleagues, I have a few comments to say. First of all, thank you for everyone that attended the town hall, everybody that supported, everybody that did a lot, a lot of work, so thank you so much. Principals that attended, Buena Vista principals specifically who hosted us, the teachers, the individuals, it was, I don't know why I went first, I don't know why I went first, but it was, it was a learning experience for me, for sure. Second, I want to congratulate Principal Begley from Buena Vista Middle School, who was honored for being entered into the Millard North Hall of Fame, and interestingly enough, he was actually the one that started that. Well, that's amazing, and then, so that's one, bless you. Congratulations also to Ms. Susanna Lada from South High, she was honored for, as educator of the year during Hispanic Heritage Month, so that's amazing, congratulations to her. She did get and receive the biggest claps, ovations, everybody knew her, everybody, the students, the parents, everybody knew her, so congratulations to her. And one of the highlights that was also Superintendent Matt's highlight, was attending a meeting with South High students that were in the grassroots leadership group, they had so many questions for me, but they were, they're doing amazing things, and that was beautiful. So those were my comments, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Almanza. Ms. Magnusson.
Thank you, President Erdenberger. First, I wanted to shout out Standing Bear Elementary, they exceeded their fund run, fundraising goal by I think $6,000, but more importantly, because they did that, their principal, Bridget Amelia, camped on the roof. She held an astronomy lesson up there, she read a bedtime story, she distributed treats by bucket from the roof to students who came to visit her, and I talked to several students about what they thought of this, and they were all just flabbergasted that she was gonna camp on the roof and that she stayed there all night, and I think that's such a fun and creative way to encourage students, and made a big impact on them, you know, emotionally and mentally, so congrats for being a fun and creative school. Second, I wanted to encourage anyone who lives within OPS boundaries to come attend my town hall on November 11th, that's a Tuesday, at 6:00 in the evening at Buffett Middle School. I think there's one more ahead of mine, it might be Ms., oh, two ahead of mine, okay. Ms. Snipes is ahead of mine, and Ms. Foles is ahead of mine, but if you can't make either of those, anybody within OPS boundaries is welcome to come to any, but if you miss all of them, mine's the last one, so it's your last, your last chance. But on the docket to discuss is our moonshot, multi-tiered systems of support for behavior, and of course, your questions, so see as many people there as would like to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Magnusson, I have visions of your principal up on the roof. Vice President.
Yeah, President Snipes. Thank you, President Erdenberger. Riding on the town hall train, my town hall will actually be this Thursday at Central High School at 6 o'clock PM. I will say that going forward, I will probably not do it at Central again, I think in the future, I try to be a little bit more inclusive, and possibly at like an elementary school or something like that. I did not go to Central, I went to Bryan, and I forgot how massive that school is, and all how, finding parking and everything, so I just want to express that, but please, tell a friend to tell a friend to tell a friend, and if Central is not a place that they can get to, there are other town halls happening, and I know that we have nine different board members, but you know, no school belongs to any one of us, and these are all of our schools, and we serve all students regardless of which sub-district we belong to, so feel free to attend any of them. Bree has one, you have Ms. Foles, excuse me, Mrs. Magnusson as well, so we encourage people to attend, this is not about us, this is really, well, it's about everyone, and just really being able to have a space for a little bit more dialogue, a little bit more detail than maybe what happens here specifically within this space, trying to just bring what's happening to everyone out there. Thank you.
Thank you very much, I will give a shout-out for Ms. Foles. Town hall, it is on Saturday, November 1st, here at the TAG Building, I believe at 10 o'clock. Yes, I'm getting a lot of nods, so Ms. Foles will be here, November 1st, at 10 o'clock. And let's move on to our consent agenda. At this time, any board member may request that any item on the consent agenda be removed from the consent agenda. Oh, got her. Thank you, Superintendent Ray. Sorry, I've got so much to do. Okay, sorry about that. Okay, I'm sorry, I apologize, public comment. The next item on the agenda is public comment, we have two speakers who have submitted requests to speak forms, the board has adopted policy 8346, which limits individual speakers to a maximum of five minutes. Dr. McFarland will let you know when you have one minute remaining and when you have 30 seconds remaining. We understand that people have strong feelings about issues that may be raised, so we ask that you refrain from applause or other outbursts during their comments. If the subject of your public comments is related to a specific student or staff member, please do not identify the student or staff member, and instead provide that information to Dr. McFarland, and she will assist us in looking into your concerns. Pursuant to the requirements specified in Nebraska Revised Statute 841412, unless the requirement is waived for security reasons, please state and spell your first and last name, state your current address, and let us know if you're here representing any organization before you begin your public comment. There are no requests for a waiver this evening. In addition, we ask that you remain seated until called to the podium, please remain at the podium and do not approach the board table. If you have any materials to distribute, please let me know, and Dr. McFarland will come get them from you. As a final note, public comment is set aside for you to comment on matters which you wish to present to the board. Board members will not respond during public comment. If you would like to discuss anything with a member of the board, please feel free to contact them or an appropriate member of the staff directly. It is now 6:40 PM, and our first speaker is Ms. Michaela Kazor.
Good evening, my name is Michaela Kazer, M.I.C.H.A.E.L.A.K.A.Z.O.R., and my address is 1010 North 192nd Court in Elkhorn, Nebraska. Good evening, Superintendent Ray, members of the board and OPS community. My name is Michaela Kazer, and I'm here tonight to bring something to your attention, something that every parent, teacher, and leader in this room should care deeply about. There is a book that has been removed from a Wilson County High School in Tennessee, but it remains available right now in Mars Middle School in the library. A book that any 11-year-old can check out without their parents ever knowing. The book is called "The Poet X." According to the OPS library catalog, the description reads, "Zo Mara Batista feels unheard and unable to hide in her Harlem neighborhood. Ever since her body grew into curves, she has learned to let her fists and her fierceness do the talking." It sounds harmless enough, right? Just another story about a young girl trying to find her voice, but let's not be deceived by a nice summary. Beneath that surface lies content that no middle school student should ever be exposed to. A study published in The Guardian found that young people who consume sexual content in media, including books, experience measurable harm. I quote directly from the article, "Young women who have read L. James erotic novel The Fifty Shades of Grey are more likely to display sexist attitudes," according to news research. So let me ask, why are we normalizing this for kids barely entering adolescence? Why are we sexualizing our children under the banner of diversity, inclusion, and representation? This is not education, this is indoctrination, designed to desynthesize our children to sin and strip parents of their rightful authority. The Bible says to train up a child in the way he should go, and when he is old, he will not depart from it. That's our duty as parents, educators, and community members, is to teach our children what is good, true, and beautiful. If we can't agree that pornography belongs nowhere near our children, then we have lost our moral compass as a district. I call on this board tonight to immediately remove "The Poet X" and any other pornographic material that is in our libraries, and I call on every parent in this community to awaken, speak up, and protect our children, because we don't, because if we don't stand for them now, who will? Parents, if you have children in the room, please remove them due to the explicit content in this book. On page 130, it says, "In bed at night, my fingers search a heat I have no name for, sliding into a center, finding the hidden core, or stem, or maybe the root, I'm learning to caress and breathe at the same time, how to be silent and feel something grow inside of me, and when it all builds up, I sink into my matches. I feel such release, such a relief, I feel such a shame settle like a blanket covering me, head to toe. To make myself feel this way is a dirty thing, right? Then why does it feel so good?" And then another page of this book states, "A boy's face in my hands, but he's nearly a man. Memories and mommy's words almost lash my fingers away, but I brush upward against the grain and prickle and bristle of a light beard at his jaw. His cheekbones rise like the sun, the large canvas of a forehead, a nose that takes space. This is a face that apologizes for itself. The boy moves his body closer to mine, and I can feel his hands drop down from my waist to my hips, and then brushing upward these boobs I hate that I now push at him like an offering. His hands move so close, our faces move closer, and then my phone alarm rings, waking me up for school. In my dreams, this is a mouth that knows more than curses and prayer." And that's only two excerpts from this book. So I encourage you, please, remove this book from this district, our children are worth protecting from sexual material that will indoctrinate them and hurt them. Thank you.
Our next public comment will be from Michelle Rogers.
Hello, my name is Michelle Rogers, M.I.C.H.E.L.L.E.R.O.D.G.E.R.S., address 15565 Adams Street, number 303, Omaha, Nebraska, 68137. So thank you so much for allowing me to speak again. I'm just gonna kind of go, kind of pass whenever I did speak a couple, a couple times ago, I spoke on the book Flamer. So this is just kind of a follow-up to that as well, and, but you know, just to kind of start this off though, I was asked, I've been asked by several people, why do you speak at these school board meetings? And, and then they had said, why do you go and speak at the school board when they obviously don't care, and whenever they obviously hate you? Because I can tell by their body language that they really don't like what you have to say, and that they don't like you. Second question is, do I feel like I'm making an impact? So my answer to the first question is, I come here to speak not for myself, but for every single child that is represented on that wall, but then also for those 52,000 children that may not have a voice yet. And I speak because I know that the stuff in the libraries is not good, and it's absolute trash. And then the most important reason is that, is that the Lord put it on my heart to speak for the children and make parents aware of what their children are being subjected to. And I also know that I'm not the most well-liked person here, which is fine, but you know what, people hated Jesus too, but look, when- People hated Jesus too, but look, what happened. But it doesn't mean I'm supposed to back down and not use my voice to stand up for righteousness though. So I will continue to stand. So do I feel like I'm making an impact? Answer is yes, in the Kingdom of God, but I'm also just, I'm going to continue to keep on trying to make an impact until I see change here as well. So now to the good stuff. One of the previous times I spoke was regarding Flamer by Mike Carrato. I didn't have the chance to print off pictures or anything and I was told that I'm not allowed to actually show the pictures, but just one thing about this book is, it's actually been banned or challenged in several places, including school districts in Texas, Wisconsin, Maryland, and actually it was completely removed in the state of Oregon. So this book is completely banned. So with that being said, I'm going to now read off some lovely things about this book. Just I can pull it up here. So there is a picture that, that shows the main character is kneeling in a profile view with X's over his eyes and his hands are clasped together just like this. He's kneeling in front of a younger, another young man whom is naked in the shower. I don't know what that could be. And then it says, oh no, I'm getting a boner. The illustration of the middle of the picture shows the main character bent over, holding his back with a mortified look on his face. He's walking away from a, from another young man who is shown with, with his backside shown and is nude in the shower. And then there's another one that says, I know I'm not gay. Gay boys like other boys. I hate boys. So this book is also having to do with somebody that is fighting whether or not they are gay. The illustration on the top page, it also shows the main character sitting on the floor of a tent. There are two pairs of legs dangling off the edge of the beds on either side of him and the legs are bare and one pair of legs has a pair of pants pulled on the floor around their ankles. The text on the image reads, uh-oh, I think I figured out what taking care of business is. We're busting, we're each busting a load into this bottle. If you don't come, you have to drink it.
One minute.
Give me that, I'll show you. And so once again, it shows the illustration of a bottom right side of the page that shows the main character wide-eyed, sitting on the floor, looking scared with his knees to his chest with somebody with an exposed, that was exposing himself to this young child that's at the tent. So is this something that you want in your libraries? Is this something that you would want as a parent to have your children subjected to saying, hey?
Thirty seconds.
I know what I'm going to do. I'm going to masturbate into a bottle and I'm going to challenge my friends so that we're going to see who's going to drink it first. That's probably not what you want in the, in here. I'm not here to cause any waves, but I am here just to stand for the children. I will continue to stand for the children because this kind of trash does need to be taken off. It's already been banned in other states, so now let's just see some action on this. Thank you.
Moving on to the consent agenda. At this time, any board member may request that any item on the consent agenda be removed from the consent agenda and be considered and voted on separately. At this time, are there any items board members would like to pull from consent? Seeing none, are there any abstentions? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda that is before us.
Moved.
Again. Motion by Board Member Magnuson, seconded by Vice President Snipes. Roll call, please.
Tealyn.
Aye.
Almanza.
Aye.
Erdenberger.
Aye.
Frackey.
Aye.
Magnuson.
Aye.
Snipes.
Aye.
Sixi.
Thank you. Motion passes. We will now move on to a policy committee update as an information item and then on to an action item regarding some policy committee policies.
Thank you, Ms. Erdenberger. Policy committee met on October 9th. I have in my notes that it was myself, Ms. Erdenberger, and Ms. Full, but I think Ms. Full was missing from that meeting. Is that right?
Yeah.
We discussed, mostly that, that meeting was focused on the 9000s. We're working our way through them pretty steadily. I think we'll, you'll start seeing those on the agendas information items soon. We also just wanted to note there was some transcription errors in our publication of the Revised Policy 6300, some missing words, some words that were punctuation that was misplaced. I just, in full transparency, I wanted to let you know that those have been revised. There's not going to be any motions. They were, they really are just transcription errors. But if you have any questions, please let me know. We got an update on the board retreat from Ms. Erdenberger and we got an update on some work that we're doing on Policy 6800 regarding technology in the classroom and in our schools. And with that, I, if you're all right, I will move on to the action item. This is approval of second reading of Policy 7000 and 7003. Just some slight changes in these policies as we move them from first to second reading. And the, the issue is really kind of two changes. We noticed that it's still referred to buildings and grounds. We changed that to District Operational Services, the, the current name of the division that handles the contracts. And we changed Executive Director of DOS, District Operational Services, to make reference to the Chief Operating Officer. So not substantive, just making sure that we've got our nomenclature correct as we move these on to second reading. And with that, I will put it as a committee motion for approval of second reading on for Policy 7000 and 7003.
Thank you very much. As the motion comes from a committee, no second is needed. Roll call, please.
Almanza.
Aye.
Erdenberger.
Aye.
Frackey.
Aye.
Magnuson.
Aye.
Snipes.
Aye.
Tealyn.
Aye.
Sixi.
Thank you very much. Motion passes. And now we move all the way to receipt of reports. There's one report on the agenda this evening, which is the 2024 Graduate Follow-Up Report. Lots of interesting information in there. I recommend that you read it. And now we will move on to closed session. Ms. Snipes, do you have a motion?
I move that the Board of Education go into closed session for the protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with the Superintendent, Secretary to the Board, Chief of Staff, Charles Wakefield, Shane Ryan, Rian Colette Nero, and Legal Counsel, Real Estate Negotiations, and Legal Advice.
Thank you very much. We have a motion to go into closed session by Ms. Snipes and a second by?
Second.
Ms. Magnuson, thank you. Roll call, please.
Erdenberger.
Aye.
Frackey. Magnuson.
Aye.
Snipes.
Aye.
Tealyn.
Aye.
Almanza.
Aye.
Sixi.
Thank you very much. Let me remind the board that the purpose for closed session is for the protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with the Superintendent, Secretary to the Board, Chief of Staff, Charles Wakefield, Shane Ryan, Colette Nero, and Legal Counsel, Real Estate Negotiations, and Legal Advice. Let the record reflect that the board went into closed session at 6:55.
Let the record... Let the record reflect that the board came out of closed session at 8:07 PM. And let the record reflect that the board meeting adjourned at 8:08 PM.